Good day, everyone, and welcome to the Fajah edition of the Black Game Pro Mixer. My name is Kirsten Timothy, and I'm a development tester over at Ubisoft in Toronto. Today, I'll be joined by my big bro Leon Winkler, who happens to be the Director of Events for Ubisoft. How are you doing today, Leon?
I'm good. I'm looking forward to this very cool session that we have for you all today. But Kirsten, I'm not gonna steal your thunder, so... Why are we doing this again? What is the Black Game Pros Mixer?
So, the Black Game Pro Mixer was created by myself and Leon, and we are using this to foster and uplift the talents of the many black people across the gaming industry. So, a lot of people don't understand that within the gaming industry, there's a lot of different jobs. And unfortunately, black people are of the minority in the industry. And we want to be able to blow that up and bring in a lot more talent like us, people that look like us into the industry. So, we had the opportunity to join Fajah today to speak about what we want to do within the Black Game Pros Initiative and really tap into the African market, because as of right now, Western gaming doesn't really know what's happening in Africa. And believe me, there is a lot happening in Africa. So, first and foremost, thank you to Paradise Games, thank you to Fajah. And hopefully, today, by the end of the session, you will learn a lot more about what the gaming industry looks like in Africa. Leon, what do we have planned for today?
So, indeed, thank you very much, Kirsten. Indeed, for us, it's this, the collaboration that we right now have with Fajah is for us a starting point into basically opening the door to start a dialogue, because we're also still learning. And that's why we invited some very interesting speakers that represent the entire African diaspora to talk about, well, first and foremost, are there any differences between the African gaming industry, the Western gaming industry, and how to build bridges between the two? So, we've invited eight very interesting speakers. I'm gonna go by them, name by name, so that everybody knows them. We have Gabriel, who's the CEO of Ikati Esports. So, Gabe, in South Africa, is one of the pioneers, and I think one of the first, if not the first, black-owned, started the first black-owned esports company in South Africa. Then, we have Denise Williams, who is a member of the Forbes Business Council and the CEO of SVNet, which is basically an organization that builds bridges between the Nigerian tech industry and Silicon Valley. We have Emmanuel Yao, who is our Associate Director of Production Services at Ubisoft Singapore, sharing stories from his come-up, how did he get his job? And hopefully, teach you guys something, or at least give you some inspiration on how he got into the industry. We have Sidik Bakayoko, who is the founder and CEO of Paradise Game. So, the wonderful person who allowed us to do the Black Game Pros Mixer, he's also gonna share some of his experiences. We have Fatim, the Media Planner for Ubisoft Canada. She did a very cool interview the other day in one of our Ubisoft news postings, which kind of like forced us to be like, hey, we need you for this Black Game Pros Mixer. We need you here to share your wisdom, share your expertise, because we think it could be super inspirational. Then, we have Johanna Riquier, who is the Strategic Partnership and Business Development for Middle East and Africa at Unity 3D. Amazing speaker. You might have seen her at other events. She's gonna share some of her knowledge on how to build bridges between the African and the Western industry to make sure that we all do even better. We have Jean-Philippe Dojo. You might have seen him in the previous Black Game Pros Mixer. He's our Legal Innovations Manager at Ubisoft HQ in Paris. And right now, I think he is based out of Berlin, and he's gonna also share some of his stories once again. And then, last but not least, we have Sibunisil Motah, who's a contributing writer for Game Mecca, and she wrote a very cool article about what it is like to be a female gamer in Africa. So, I think with all these wonderful guests that we have, we believe that we have a very cool kind of mix and balance between individuals' profiles. Because one of the things that is very important for us with the Black Game Pros Mixer is showing that, first and foremost, indeed, what Kirsten mentioned, that representation is there. It's like, there are people out there that look like us, which is very important. We're not alone. But second of all, we wanna make sure to also put a spotlight on these different job profiles, because, and then, maybe I'm wrong, but a lot of folks that I talk to think that the only way to get into video games is if you're a coder, programmer, in esports, influencer. And while that, yes, that is a way in, for sure. There are so many other ways into the video game industry to make your career out of video games. And that is basically one of the goals of this mixer. We really wanna leverage this platform that we have, the people that we have, the company that we work for, to show all of you watching that, A, you're not alone, B, there is a career for you in video games, and C, you can make that career whatever you want. What do you think, Kirsten? What, just a vibe on that a little bit?
Honestly, you hit the nail on the head, because, again, people think, oh, I can't do coding. I'm not good at math. I can make it at the video games. Or, oh, man, I can't afford school. I can't make it to video games. I can't afford the program. Well, in my particular instance, I'm a college dropout. I figured out my way into video games. I thought I had to learn programming. I most definitely failed programming in school, to be completely honest with you. But I got into the art field, and the art field worked for me. And learning about, for example, like JP, learning about what he does in legal, I didn't, I did not know until the last mixer that that could be a job opportunity. Or looking into like Fatim or her media planning, I did not know that was a job opportunity. So, I feel that the more mixers we do and the more diverse profiles we get, the more the people know and understand that, not that the possibilities are endless within game design or game development in general, but there are so many opportunities available.
Oh, yeah, for sure. One hundred, one hundred, one hundred percent. And even if we manage to, to get one of you guys or girls watching this mixer to join the industry, that would be great, because it all starts with one person, and it's like baby steps. It's okay, as long as there's progression. That being said, this is not our final mixer. We're gonna do another one, for those interested. Of course, we're gonna focus on the one today first, but we need to mention that there will be another one December 11th. More information on that probably later this week, or you might have already seen it. We don't know yet. Either way, the Black Mixer is here to stay, and we think it's just a starting point. It is a starting point for us into indeed generating more diversity and representation into this industry that we love so much. That be, that being said, it's linked to, well, my story, where I was inspired by reading an article about someone who was in the industry, working, I think, for EA or Activision in events. I read that article like twenty years or so ago, and then now I'm here, Director of International Events. So, it's all about, hopefully, planting seeds and showing the opportunities that there are, that there are out there. Even if you're in Africa or wherever in the world you are. So, I think on that note, should we dive right into the first panel? Kirsten, what do you think?
Yeah, I think we most definitely dive into the first panel. But before we do that, I want the people to know that throughout the panel, you guys are gonna have questions. Feel free to hit us up on our LinkedIn or our Twitters. We'll give that information later. And we will try our best to answer any question that you have, because at the end of the day, we are all in this together. And we wanna make sure by the time these panels are over, you have all the information you need to set yourself up for success. So, let's jump right into it, Leon.
All right, so let's dive into the first panel.
So, hi, everyone. Thanks so much for watching. If you just tuned in, you're watching the Black Game Pros Mixer Fajah Edition. So, really focusing on what's going on in the African continent. We have three amazing human beings here on this call, on this panel talk. So, let me start introducing the speakers one by one, so you know who are we talking about. So, first and foremost, we have Gabriel, who basically is the CEO of Ikati Esports, a South African-based esports team established in 2017. Not only esports organization, but also a lifestyle brand. Ikati Esports has teams and players that compete in PUBG Mobile and Counter-Strike Global Offensive, responsible for providing foresight, leadership in the company, and drive the company's strategic goals in line with the company's vision and mission. Hi, Gabriel. How are you doing, buddy? Thanks so much for being here. Thanks so much for being here.
Yeah, thank you for this invitation.
You're very welcome. Then, let me introduce the second speaker of this panel, Sidik Bakayoko, the founder and CEO of Paradise Game. Basically, the guy behind this organization of Fajah, an Ivorian company with a mission to entertain, educate, and employ young Africans. Paradise Game's vision is to engage and influence 200 million young Africans using video games in the next five years through activity centers in significant malls, video game events, and best of all, gaming multimedia content and support of African game developers. Sidik is on board, on the Board of the African Game Developers Association. Then, we have Sibunisil Motah. But indeed, Sidik, welcome. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
I wanted to dive right into the next one.
No, no, no. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And also, Sidik, thank you so much for setting up an event like Fajah. Thank you so much for having us. It's much appreciated.
It's an honor. It's an honor. Thank you.
So, then, indeed, moving on to the next final, not last but not least, Sibunisil Motah. Her description is a little bit more aspirational. First of her name, a thinker, writer, gamer, and collector of meaningful conversations and memes, passionate about good, about the good in the world. On top of that, she's a contributing writer for Game Mecca and the writer of the article, "I'm a Black Woman Gamer and People Still Look at Me Like I Am a Unicorn." Very cool article. If you haven't read it yet, please do, because it really gives a very cool insight of what it is like to be a female gamer in South Africa. So, Sibunisil, thank you so much for also for being here. So, let's get right, let's get right into the business. Because one of the goals of this, or one of the reasons why we wanted to do this mixer is to see, get more of an idea of what's going on in the African continent. So, we wanted to invite all of you to start talking about basically what you all did in order to break into the African gaming industry. So, well, it's both for us to understand a little bit more what it's like over there, and at the same time, also for all the watchers who wanted to join the industry, so that they have an idea of how they could do that, because you all have very interesting, different backgrounds. So, let's start with, Sibunisil, with the first question. What do you think are the biggest misconceptions there are about the African gaming industry?
I think one of the first ones is not acknowledging how big and growing it actually is. I remember doing a bit of research a while ago, and there was the South African Observatory. And they did this entire piece last year of how the gaming industry is just flourishing in South Africa. And PWC since 2017 has also been studying the entertainment industries, particularly video games. So, I think firstly, it's not acknowledging how big it actually is, the potential that it has, how many people are on board with it, and just the sheer magnitude of its influence in the day, the times that we're in. So, it's there firstly, it exists on the African continent. And, yeah, there's so many different things that just show that it's a very real industry that's growing, and so many different people involved across the spectrum. So, I think that's the biggest misconception, that it doesn't exist, or it's not as good.
That's a great answer. Thank you very much, Sibunisil. I'm gonna throw it to Sidik, especially since you've been doing great stuff as well in the African continent. What's your opinion on this?
Now, I definitely believe the same thing as what she said. You know, I can still remember, I think it was three or four years ago, it was my first Gamescom. Through a couple of friends, I was able to get into contact with some of the, you know, big editors and big, you know, video game companies. And I remember seeing their face when I was talking, you know, they were, they all had that face like, like, you're nice. I like you, but this is not happening. You know, Africa is not on our roadmap for like the next three or five years, or maybe even seven years. So, it's all nice, but you know, I think, you know, there is definitely a market, and a lot of companies don't understand it, don't feel it. I think one of the other things that I would mention as well is the human resources. Unfortunately, people have a tendency to feel that there's no human resource in Africa for gaming. And I think there's a little bit of a misconception. There is people, there's a lot of creative people that can come up with great scripts and great concepts of games. Unfortunately, they have not been exposed to the kind of environments where you learn how you develop a game, you learn how you produce quality games, or you learn how to work the same way somebody would work in Europe or in the US. So, I think it's more of a, these guys need to be supported and brought into an environment where they can learn and get how it's done elsewhere, so that they could come up and at some point, you know, do a great job. And I think it's very related to the market, but people don't feel like they can make money off of video game here. And I think it's just about how you approach the market, how you capture the market, and that's how you're gonna be able to monetize those games or those things. You know, people, I think back in the 1990s, people were saying that there was no potential in cell phones, because people are living under $1 a day, so how come cell phones are gonna, you know, are gonna break? And today, you look at it, you know, cell phones are just everywhere. I think we had like eighty or ninety percent penetration rate. So, I think video game is probably gonna be the same. We just need to wait it out a bit, and we need players that will do great things and partners elsewhere to, you know, to believe in the potential of the market.
Fair enough. And then, moving on to Gabriel. I mean, Gabriel as one of the, let's call it pioneers of esports in South Africa. What's your opinion on this? How do you think, what's the biggest misconception about the African gaming industry that you've encountered?
Thanks, Leon, again, and thanks to Sidik for the amazing work that they've been doing over there with Fajah. Basically, for me, I think there are three things, right? So, one, we look, we'll have to look at from the game publishers themselves, who think that there are not too many consumers of their games in the continent, right? And because probably one, they assume that we don't have good internet access. And secondly, they pretty much assume that we do not afford their, 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 their games that they develop or produce, in a way. Then, also, you look at the manufacturers, right? You look at your Sony, your Microsoft, and all of that, with the Xbox, the PlayStation. We always the last ones, you know, in terms of having access, or in terms of like having access to the latest gaming consoles and so forth. But importantly, when you bring it home in the continent, the assumption is that there are not too many good game developers, right? In the continent, of which that is the biggest misconception that is out there. I mean, the past few years, more so from 2017 to 2018 up until now, we have seen like this growth in terms of the gaming industry in the continent. We've seen in 2018 with Niyamakop and their game Assemblance, which basically became the first game in the continent, or coming from developers from the continent. There was published, published with Nintendo Switch, right? And to rethink about it, we're not saying that open up those opportunities for us, but what we're seeing, the continent, is that treat us in the same way that you would treat your consumers in the US, in the UK, in China, and so forth, because we've got the capabilities as well to develop more or less, even to an extreme. I mean, I was saying, with confidence that we've got, you know, excellent game developers that are coming from the continent, that for the past few years, they've developed great games. Just that they have not been that many opportunities with regards to them having access to those publishers and so forth, of which that is slowly and surely changing. So, that, 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 that would be my, my, my take on that. But lastly, also, Leon, is around the investment, right? There is, and that's the biggest aspect into that. Because without that investment to nurture the African gaming industry, you know, it will literally take us years to get to that level. So, if those investors that are investing in those on the continents, here we are in Africa, we've got those games that we're developing, right? We've got the market for those games as well, or the consumers. We've got, we've got the consumers for those games as well, right? So, basically, what I'm saying is that we also need, need the same opportunities that they provide to their other game developers across the continent, of which what's across other continents, of which what is now Ubisoft is also doing as well, which we really applaud. So, yeah, that, that would be my take on that, to an extent, Leon.
No, I mean, I agree with you. I've heard that many times indeed, that talking to, doing my research before doing the, doing this mixer, talking to some of the folks out there in the African diaspora, hearing indeed that they almost feel neglected by the big publishers out there that indeed focus their campaign maybe first on the other continent before eventually, if ever, reaching out to the African continent, indeed. And I mean, we're trying, that's one of the first steps. That's one of the reasons why we're doing this mixer as well, because we want to open the door. We want to start a conversation. We want to indeed see what is possible by also learning from your expertise and all the cool stuff that you have been doing. So, thank you all very much for that answer. That's very, very insightful. Moving on to the next topic. And I wanna start with Sibunisil, or Sibunisil again, or Boni. I'm just gonna start calling you Boni, if you don't mind. Awesome, awesome, perfect. Otherwise, such a mouthful. So, so I read in your article, indeed, that you had a very interesting way to start your career in video games by writing a kind of like fake review of a game that is pretty familiar to Ubisoft, but that it actually was picked up. Can you elaborate a little bit on this?
I've always been what you'd call a budget gamer, simply because I couldn't afford. I couldn't afford. I fell in love with it from the age of five, thanks to my dad, bringing home an old PC from work. I'm talking white monitor, white PC box, floppy disk and everything. And that's where it started. And unfortunately, I could only go to my cousin's house to play video games on holidays, because they had the money, right? And so, it wasn't so much about, I'll say, I love my family. I loved visiting them, but it was more about what game does he have now? And I got to play. So, when my dad finally bought us the PS3, the first game I ever played on that console I never bought was Assassin's Creed. And, right, I know, this is why this is so full circle for me. Because I, there used to be these stores like Music and Look and Listen, and I'd always cut out Assassin's Creed and keep it there, not knowing what the heck this game was about, but it would be the first game I'd ever play. So, from that point, I could only play games I could afford to. That means going to like pawn shops to see if they have any games that are like less than a hundred bucks. So, my cousin introduced me to Fallout 3, and, oh, loved it. Now, years later, rumors start spreading about Fallout 4. And it was like, ooh, can't wait, can't wait. And when they finally announced it, they announced it's gonna be for next gen. Oh, snap. I can't afford a PS4. So, I had to release my pain somehow. So, I decided to write some fake review of Fallout 4, imagining, I just fantasized what would it be like if I played it, and what would my review be. So, I wrote it. In a way, it was like a therapy session for my budget gaming issues. And I wrote that fake review, and I sent it to a couple of editors just to give some tips on my writing, because I was slowly getting into the habit of writing. And one of them came back, Walt Pretorius. He's the editor and founder for Game Mecca magazine. And he said, "This is so hilarious. I absolutely love it. Don't you wanna start writing for us?" And from 2016, literally up until the last issue, I was, that's how I got into the gaming industry, like actively participating in it. So, and when we had our first meeting with Leon, a side note, he was wearing a Fallout necklace. And I was like, this is so weird. I was like, no, this is way too many full circle moments that I have for me right now. But that's how I got into it. I started writing from there. And then, I started writing more articles here and there. So, it's been really interesting. And then, of course, meeting Gabe a few years later. And that's why it's like, it's been a while since you've seen each other. Feel ashamed. But that's how I got into it.
Super, super inspiring story. And then, let's throw it to Gabe indeed. What's your story? How did you get into becoming the CEO of an esports company? Sounds pretty cool.
There's no title. Oh, well, well, I actually got into, I'll say, by accident, you know. So, I think it's back then in 2000, oh, 2015. Yeah, late 2015, I was doing then my masters. And while doing my masters, I had a conversation with a friend of mine during lunch, and he just brought up this esports thing, and just how it's becoming and so forth. Now, mind you, I last played games when I was like fourteen or fifteen years old. So, for like ten years, I hadn't played games. So, I got interested in esports, because then it was fairly something that is new. And I then, this time, research. Later on, 2016, I went to attend my first Rage Expo, which is like one of the biggest gaming expos in the country. Well, when I went there, I had taken along my two brothers, my other brothers. And when we got there, what really shocked me was that I could literally count the number of black people that were there. I wanna say literally, like, not more than ten or fifteen, you know, apart from the individuals that they were working there. Now, Rage Expo in numbers, they do like sixty thousand, eighty thousand, right? Now, and for me, you know, that was, you know, the start of getting into esports, right? I didn't get into it because there was money in esports, because three years later, there's no money in esports in South Africa. So, I didn't get into it because there was money in esports. But I got into it because of the desire to change what I saw, right? Because I'm from, I'm from a township in South Africa that is called Soetjor. And coming from Soetjor, just going there and realized that I have, there's so many talented young gamers from the township, not just in Soetjor, but that's across the country. And they are not exposed to what's going on out there. They're exposed to their opportunities in the gaming industry, or the esports industry by then. And I took it upon myself, because there's one thing to complain about it. There's not a thing to do something about it, you know. I made a plan, resigned from work, you know, the drill, the usual drill. You know, took whatever that I had, put it into some computers and all of that. By then, I didn't know any gamers again in Soetjor. So, hired a place, pulling my computers there, everything else. Only to find out later on, two, three months down the line, when I met or found a few gamers, they told me that, oh, you bought them on computers. Those are not the gaming computers. So, yeah, then, we got together. We then strategized in terms of what game that would basically use as a benchmark to enter this industry, that will just put us on a different pedestal, in a way. And we went for Counter-Strike, you know, which till this day, I don't know what we were, we were thinking to go for Counter-Strike. And for the guys as well, you know, it was the first time for them to play Counter-Strike. They played FIFA, they played Take Care, they played StuF, and all these other games, but they've never played Counter-Strike. Then, from then on, 2017, that's when then Ikati Esports was pretty much born. And we had basically an opportunity to have the boys to participate in almost all the major tournaments in the country. in almost all the major tournaments in the country, uh, becoming the first black owned, uh, not the first black owned, by then, we were the first black owned esports organization in the country. And uh, the boys themselves became pretty much the first black all t- all the first black, first all black Counter-Strike team, you know, and not just in South Africa, but just across the globe. And there was, for me, there was, you know, uh, an experience that, you know, puts some joy in my heart, because from then on, you know, you started then to see a lot of young boys and girls in townships, you know, starting to realize, wow, this this is called esports. Then looking up to our brothers like uh uh, what they're doing, uh, 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 in a border coast, uh, Fajah, uh, Sidik, uh, because then I was doing my essay, and I saw Sidik, they were doing their thing. There were a lot of brothers in Kenya doing their thing. So we then started to do our own township gaming expo. Uh, you know, which is called Agassi Tech Fest, uh, ex- Agassi Tech Fest Gaming Expo. Uh, later on, uh, which has changed to a tech fest expo. And by doing that, we headed the township. So I was like, well, there's no need for us to go there in the suburbs, right? We'll have it in the township and we'll bring our, we'll bring the youth where basically uh, 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 it's close to home. And, you know, it grew in boundaries. Uh, for the past three years, we've been doing the tech fest. It's only said that we didn't do it because of the reasons that are there. Uh, and I mean, that for me, you know, uh, I I normally say that irrespective of how this thing come out, right, irrespective of how it pans out, you know, uh, I I I I solely believe that we have succeeded with the in the intention of us getting into this esports ecosystem in South Africa. And uh, today, you know, uh, as you can see, I'm sitting on a gaming chair from our, we've got our sponsors, we've got partners that we work with, we've worked with uh, the biggest brands in the in the in the country, your Vodacom, uh, your Taboness Pizza, and we working with, you know, uh, AOC and so forth and all of that. And that has been awesome. But having said that, you know, we still till to this day, the only black owned esports organization in the country. So what I'm saying with that is that uh we still got much work to do, uh, to raise that awareness, you know, and just bring people to the, to these opportunities that are there within the gaming industry, because it's not just esports, but just the entire gaming industry. Uh, be be curious, we 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 started to work with schools. So we do uh, programs with schools, where we go to schools and basically teach kids what is esports, what is gaming, what are career opportunities that are there. And we've got some uh, plans with the schools that we will run out next year just to grow and and basically, my my vision is, you know, uh, have an inclusive gaming industry, you know, in South Africa, you know, and I think for that, you know, uh, it will take not just us, uh, it it will take the entire that I actually met Boni because I was doing some research around women in gaming in South Africa, specifically black women. And that's where I came across Boni and her articles, like you, Leon, see. So I read her articles and uh, started to follow on social media and all of that. Then we we met, we discussed, and I realized that we shared pretty much the same sentiments around this gaming industry. And in two thousand and eighteen, uh, we worked together for a tech fest, you know, and ever since then, we've been, you know, working together, trying to uh, you know, bring more more black people, importantly. And I'm not saying that we don't care about our races, but, you know, it does his whole differently. So that's that's what, yeah, that's that's the story behind it, you know.
Thank you, man. That's super, super, super.
Nice, nice.
Throwing it to Sidik and also tying in a little bit to the to the third uh question, how to be and stay successful in the industry. This is the fourth year that Fajah has taken place or is taking place. Uh, um, it's it's going better every year, it seems. And and how how did you do that?
I I think, you know, to be in a sense, to be to be successful in this industry, I think you need to have, you know, uh, uh, something here that's not clicking, you know. Uh, no, no, I'm just joking. I I I think, you know, it it all started, I think, with the same way with everybody, you know. It started with something, we're very, I I can still remember, I think I was probably seven or eight or something, uh, when, you know, one of my brother got a computer. I think at the time it was a Commodore and one of his friend had an Atari. I remember just sitting, sitting there, watching this screen and the lights coming off from it. And I was like, I want to do this. But at the time, you know, the older brothers were playing, so you don't get a chance to play. But it was okay. I, you know, I I I was enjoying just watching it. Fast forward, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago, uh, in the university, go to the US, unfortunately, I was in um, you know, in a, in a, in a different state and I were there. I wasn't able to find a lot of friends. Uh, the only friends that I had were people that were in my schools, and unfortunately, some of them were very uh, older. So, you know, we we had some, some, some issues. I didn't have a lot of friends there, so I fell back on video games. And I remember spending a lot of times playing video games and connecting with people online and stuff like that. I was like, wow, I just love it. Started working, went in technology, and then at some point after eight, nine years, it's like, I want to do something else. I want to do something that's fun, something I don't, I want to, I want to do something where I feel like I'm playing and not working. And and then I spoke to one guy uh, that was doing esports. I think it was back in twenty fifteen or something. I was talking to him, telling him, oh, I I saw what you guys are doing there, it's great. Uh, we want to do the same thing. And he looks at me and said, you know, I'm I'm sorry, I don't want to, you know, I I don't think Africa is is ready for that. You're never gonna have any editors that's gonna look at you. There's never gonna be an event in Africa that's gonna be successful. And I looked at him and was like, ah, okay, let's do it. Let me show you, let me show you. So I think that's that's how it all started. So the first day we started this event, we called it the biggest esports and video game event. And we said to everybody that we're gonna have fifty thousand people. So I remember my watch, watch, looked at me and said, but you don't even have one person. How are you gonna get fifty? I was like, don't worry about it. We'll get there. Fast forward four years later, we are where we are, you know, we're very happy about it. Um, you know, we're very grateful. I think, you know, uh, it 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 was a need, the community wants to express itself, that people want to show that they love gaming and they want to take it to another level. So I think we're just a channel helping, you know, helping people get to, you know, to 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 where they want to go. And and I think, you know, for us is really how can we do something that that acts as a trip, you know, that can that can create a ripple effect where uh, if we're able to be successful in one thing, then tomorrow there's gonna be another thing, and then tomorrow there's gonna be another thing, and then there's gonna be another person in Burkina, and then in Nigeria, and then in Ghana that's gonna do it. And then eventually, we'll all be connected, and we'll all be doing greater things together. So I'm I'm very, you know, I'm 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 humbling, you know, it's it's an humbling situation, you know, uh, watching what Gabriel has done. I mean, it's 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 just nice to see all these people out there who are doing great things for video games for Africa. And I think, you know, hopefully, within a couple of years, we'll be proud and happy to say that we are a real market, we are able to, you know, to be successful, and we are able to create wealth on the continent, for people on the continent, but uh, you know, as well for people outside. Because I think, you know, we live in a global world today. So it's not just about creating wealth for yourself, but about creating wealth for everybody and and finding a spot for each of the industry players. So I think we we're getting slowly there, but I think we're getting there, you know, we're getting more traction. So I'm very grateful.
Amen. Wow. Yeah. It's 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 great and really keep on, keep on doing what you do, Sidik, keep on doing what you do, Gabe, keep on doing what you do, Boni, because I think it's super inspiring to hear all of your stories, not just for me, I mean, but I think for for anyone watching, because it shows that there are so many ways into the gaming industry. Uh, it shows that you can create your own path. If you're, if you're passionate about games, I mean, like I was as a kid, I had the same thing. I mean, I'm passionate about games and I found my way and I found my niche. Find your niche. I mean, it's it's possible. And I I I agree with all of what what all of you are saying, and I think that it's now only just a matter of time. It's a matter of time for this to happen. And this happening in in the African continent, but also the Western industry and the rest of the world embracing what you guys and girls are doing out there. Uh, since I want to be respectful of time, and I don't want to make Sidik mad because he planned it, he had a schedule out. Uh, let's, I want to conclude with one kind of like final thought from your side in regards of if you have any like major learning that you could give to people watching, something that you could share, something that you did that that helped to uh, on your career. Short. Who wants to go first?
Ladies first.
No pressure.
Put you on the spot.
It's actually a lot, because I think our experiences, as different as they are, uh, we do have a thread that connects us, and it starts with exposure to it. Um, as soon as someone's exposed to something that they're passionate about, uh, it's strangely enough, it 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 finds its way to open doors for you. Uh, so with me, I think similar to Gabe, going to the Rage Expo and being like, wait, I think I can count how many people that look like me are there. And being frustrated with being asked the same question as a black female, uh, so you're here with your boyfriend. Sorry, what? No, no, where is he? You know, oh my gosh, you like games? What games? Are you a real gamer? You know, there's all these unnecessary things where you feel like you have to prove yourself as a gamer. Um, I think if I could leave any nugget of wisdom, uh, I'd say especially to black females, let me say that, and the fellow black child, it's to be comfortable in owning your space. Uh, take up space comfortably, you know. We we really need to get past this point where we feel like we need to explain ourselves and why we're there. Uh, we don't have to explain why we love video games. We don't have to explain why we're into esports. We we actually owe no explanation for our passion. And I think that we should be unapologetically black and interested in this industry, because it's the only way we're gonna actually push through any ceilings, any boundaries. So we've been doing this esports thing, it just took a different form in this country. Uh, I don't know if you guys, there's this thing called Plaza Shops, and I actually thought about this a few days ago, there'd be arcade machines, and they'd be like Street Fighter or Mortal Kombat, and there's been this one guy, I would think that those guys were our first esports players, because they would take that two rand or fifty cents and just get, they would have the top three high scores. You know, they've dropped out of school since they were in grade, like what, five? And they're adults now at that arcade region. That was our, the first esports tournaments we had. So as Africans, I think even in bridging the gap between the African market and the Western, it's about coming with a tone of respect, I believe, for the African experience. Uh, we have our own stories to tell and our own ways to tell those stories. That means our animation might look different, our stories and narratives would look different. Uh, but either way, we have an exchange of resources. We have just as much as we can receive, there's a lot that we have to give. And if that can stay, I think it will really level the playing field across the board, in whichever angle you're gonna come through uh, into gaming. So I think that's that's what it is, it is for me, and that we can enjoy this industry as a whole together. Yeah.
Yeah, yes, yes to that, amen. Yes. I think we we have time for for one more.
There's one, there's, I mean, I have one line, I have one line that I say for me that I use all the time, it's like, only warriors will survive. So it doesn't matter how many people tell you not, you can't do it. It doesn't matter how many people tell you it's not possible, you gotta keep going, you gotta keep going, you gotta keep the faith alive. We are markets, we know it's, you know, a tiger doesn't want and doesn't need to say that he's a tiger, you know, people see it and know it and feel it. So we'll get there.
And on that note, indeed, I think on that wise note, we uh, we're wrapping up this panel. But stay tuned, everyone, we will have more panels coming up. Second one coming up is how to build bridges between what's going on in the Western gaming industry and the African gaming industry. We have some very interesting speakers for that one as well. And followed by that, we have another panel on basically how to break into that Western industry, even if you're based out of Africa, how to do that. So please, everybody, stay tuned. I want to thank all the all the speakers here, Sidik, Gabriel, Boni. Thank you so much for sharing your wisdom. Thank you so much for sharing your energy. And uh, thank you very much.
Hey, everybody, welcome back. This is going to be our second panel for the Black Game Pro Mixer of Asia Edition. Uh, if you're just tuning in, and let you know that uh, we at the Black Game Pros have been doing this mixer for about a year now. And today's topic is gonna be building bridges between the Western and African gaming industry. On this panel today, I have Leon Winkler, Johanna and Denise. How are we doing today?
I'm doing amazing.
I'm great, thank you.
Pleasure to be here. Hi, guys.
I'm also, I'm also, I'm also BPF, sorry to interrupt, but I'm very excited to have have both of you powerhouses here joining this panel. I'm basically just here, even though I'm part of kind of like the organization. I would probably shut up most of the time because I want to hear you talk and share your expertise, just to give some more information for for who we are talking with right now and for the viewers out there. So we have Johanna, who works for Unity 3D, and she has been setting up a lot of collaborations between the African industry, the Western industry, and on top of that, is a very good speaker and has been doing a lot of cool stuff in uh, in building bridges. So that's that. And then we have Denise indeed, who represents the organization that is responsible for also building bridges between the Nigerian tech industry and Silicon Valley. Super interesting stuff. Sorry for stealing your thunder, Kirsten, but I had to, I had to say this. I'm super proud to have you here.
No, like honestly, do what you gotta do, because right here is going to be a very great panel with very amazing guests. So let's just jump right into it. So Johanna, I want to start with you. Uh, what are the biggest misconceptions there about the Western gaming industry?
Um, I would say that the biggest misconception, well, they know everything, they've got a ton of money, and um, and they have easy access to capital. So basically, the most of the African gaming community think that the West is making a ton of money, but they really forget the the big of luck uh, of it, and really, they forget as well the conscious marketing strategy and the engagement mechanics around it. So um, we really need, they they, this is, this is the biggest misconceptions. Yeah.
Like what you said there, that um, the Western industry or gaming industry thinks that they know everything, because I find that recently they've been learning a lot from the African sector, the European sector, the uh, the Asian sector, and they're trying to adapt what's really working over there to fit into what's happening over here. So Denise, I'll ask you the same question. What are your thoughts on that?
Um, given that I am in the West Coast, you know, I definitely am gonna stand up from from my squad. Um, you know, we are culture influencers. Um, and you know, we try to diversify gaming industry as it is now. So I think Western focus right now is to be more inclusive um, in terms of uh, access to games or mediums to games. And there is interest um, to bridge that connection between Africa and the Western gaming industry, and which is why we're here. So, you know, let's explore that topic further.
Yeah, for sure. And Leon, what are your thoughts? Because you are coming from the European side of things.
Yep, exactly. And I think I think the biggest misconception, I mean, I can only speak from my own, from my own perspective. When I first joined the industry fourteen years ago, I had like the 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 idea that because it's on paper and what you saw on video and read in the magazines, because back then, we read magazines, people, yes, magazines, uh, back it looked so big. And when I joined it, yes, yes, it's a huge industry, but there were still so many opportunity, I thought it was basically like a done deal, it was basically an industry that was all set and done. But what I what I saw is when I joined, is that there were so many opportunities, so many ventures, and indeed, so many things that we still have to learn as an industry. By indeed, talking to a lot of people from all over the world in the last fourteen years, seeing that, well, basically, the gaming culture everywhere is the same, everybody, everybody who plays games kind of like has the same kind of approach and same kind of needs, even though we have different cultures. But that, there is this, I don't know, there is this uh, uh, still a focus from the Western industry too much on what we're doing, what we know, while not really actively engaging with what's going on in the different other territories that also have a lot of gamers and a lot of impact and a lot of culture that we need to listen to, which is a very long answer to your question.
No, but a very solid one as well.
Then to sort of conceptualize what Leon was saying is that, um, there, like I was saying, there's the different mediums. Um, I saw my nephews just yesterday, and I had to sit there and watch videos that he created about him playing video games. So there is, there's a culture for people who play games, and there's also a So there is, there's a culture for people who play games and there's also a culture for people who watch expert players. Um the narrative behind it. And then there's a, another platform where you can make friends while you're playing, which is like that Minecraft um building um mind frame of games. So as far as like the way games has transformed itself is become a consuming environment and a player environment.
So I'm very happy you said that, Denise.
Yes, I would say it, it becomes a consuming and a player, but it has become as well a way that people can see themselves work in. Because we, we need to look at the whole pipeline. There is the player, there is the consumers. But there is the people that create the game, the content creation as well. So uh definitely, and I think Leon, myself, we, 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 we are coming on, on that side, from that side, the people, the game tech, the publishers and the creators. Um so we need to, to look at the, this side of the ecosystem as well.
And those are really good valid points. And um it's, I love that you guys talked about the collaboration between like content creators and developers. That leads into our next question. How would you approach the Western gaming industry in regards to collaborations? Because when it comes to everything in the gaming industry, we have to network, we have to collab. So Denise, since you have home court advantage right now, I'll let you start with this one.
Um you know, this is absolutely a passion of mine. Um and I've put in a lot of consorted effort into bridging that gap um that exists. Um I do believe that you have to grow a community from scratch um and develop a culture of gaming. So for African gamers, for US gamers and ways to connect them. So I think from a social media perspective, we're connected through communication. Um there should also be some type of aspect of, you know, various players from different backgrounds. Um and it has to do with creating the elements in the environment. So Africa has to be replicated on the gaming environment to create. Um so you know, like um what is it? Grand Theft Auto. You can drive to West Hollywood in that game. When are we gonna drive to Lagos, you know, you know, a junction or um a very touristy area or even the Leckie Bridge now, which is now, you know, a monument and, you know, have that. So we have to be able to enter each of us, our worlds, um and exchange ideas in that environment.
I completely agree with you, even most recently with the release of Watch Dogs Legion. And the reception that it got, that we built London from the ground up, and it's a new experience because you used to doing like the LA, the New York, the Chicago. Going away from America and kind of bridging like, hey, here's, this is what's happening on this side of the world. This is what this city looks like. Having that set up in an African city in the future, I think is a very, very big possibility. I think that we as a collective have to kind of build that blueprint for what that looks like. So in saying that, Johanna, I want to ask you the same question. What are your thoughts on this?
My thought, um I would, I would look at it with a further eyes of three pillars. So education, so how to approach the, the Western gaming industry through collaboration. So um collaborating in education, education, education from the game tech, from collaboration between uh university in the, in Europe and the Americas that going to, to collaborate with the universities or training partners in Africa. So the, so from that, that, that would be the first, the first point. The education um that going to, and the, the, the skills that's going to be, to be taught in, in Africa will be able to, to um be beneficial for, for the uh the gaming industry in uh um in Africa. That's the first pillar. And I, I would say that I'm approached this uh from the um, from, from a game content development perspective. And um and not from a directly from a esports player consumer. So I'm looking at this from a game content development perspective. So the second one would be really um associating the partnership within the entertainment. Uh within the entertainment. So such as the education side, with the partnering with key members, uh key companies uh between Africa, on the African uh continent and the partnership between um key, key, key companies such as Ubisoft, the um Game Tech Company, Game Love, et cetera. All those partnerships are very important to, to be able to, to uh grow the community and grow the, the um, the community and grow the content development in, in Africa.
If, if, if I may chime in on that, because especially, and this is a question for Denise. Since you're, I mean, Denise is not really in, you're not really in the, in the, in the gaming industry, but really more touching on tech. What, speaking of tech partnerships, because I know that there's a lot of, uh, a lot of people out there in Africa in Nigeria as well, where you focus on mainly right now, but in Africa in general, that are looking for setting up tech partnerships. What kind of advice would you give them? With your expertise that you have, with the company that you have and the work that you do?
Um right now, we've been able to really co-define a community that exists in a tech platform. Um so in order to get closer to the ground, you have to get people who are off the ground running. So our off-the-ground-running, you know, players are tech startups that exist throughout Nigeria, throughout West Africa, throughout all of Africa, really. Uh what we've been doing through our organization, SVNET, is um finding those and in fact, they find us in exchange. So we deal with startups, professionals in the tech industries. Um so for big tech companies looking to enter, I would go in through those that are already playing in that field, those that have concepts, those that have built teams, those that have demonstrated the skill sets necessary to, you know, create an environment where tech um players can come into that country and hire skilled workers and create jobs um and create great partnerships and opportunities and avenues in gaming.
But, but I, I, I think because a lot, probably a lot of people that are watching, maybe some of the companies that are watching, they would ask it. But where do we start? We don't even know where to go. We don't even know where to look. What would you say to that? And the question also goes for, for, for Johanna.
I love that you asked that, Leon, because that really does hit the nail on the head. Um there are a few players out there in terms of um if you're thinking about from a NBA perspective, who is the NBA league of um the tech industry? SVNET sits right off the top of that NBA league because we have both state, federal level, local level, government officials um that we will associate with you so that you can register your business, come in and do, you know, whatever tax requirements that's required to be a business owner and operate. Um but you definitely want to get your legislative and legal actions in place when you come in so that you get the fair treatment and the royal treatment that you deserve when you come in. So you know, point one. Point two, um in partnering with great organization, I can also point another name out there. Endela does a great job with um recruiting um young professionals, developers. Um so if you're looking at talent, you can, you know, work with Endela and what have you. Um and then there's just very other startup organization. If you're fintech, you might want to check out Vogue Pay, their fintech organization. Um this Flutterwave, there's just a bunch of, it depends on the industry you're in, whether it's ed tech, fintech, um legal tech. Um you know, you search Google, you know, you'll find us. We're out there. And if you need access, definitely collaborate with the organization like SVNET um that will, you know, hold you down from ground up.
I actually want to touch on something that uh Leon and Johanna talked about. So Leon, you mentioned like where do you start? How do you do this? And Johanna, with one of your pillars is about education. How do we bring that together to build that foundation? So I want to ask you that question, Johanna.
Thank you. So there are, there are several ways to, to build education and which are currently being already done um with different uh companies such as Unity and Unreal. So partnering at a, at a government level to actually bring an expertise to the uh um to the ecosystem and help the, the government, really, uh the Ministry of Education, Ministry of Innovation to, uh to bring those skills at zero cost to their, the population in order for them to gain and, and market their skills and newly acquired sales. That's a first step. Um a second step would be as well to, for, for companies, private company to, to, to do, um to partner with um association uh and as well academic institutions on the ground. There is, when I talk about an association, recently the African Game Development Association has been created and the president, Eram Tywa, who, uh who is actually the CEO and founder of Litt Arts in Ghana, um can provide, because he's a veteran and know perfectly the um, the, the continent and the, and the, and the ecosystem, can, but can as well provide some, some information. And there is well, uh a platform from the um providing um blog post about the gaming industry, which is named the Game Industry Africa. And that can, if you, if you um, if you subscribe to that site, media platform, you can have um regular update on what's happening in Africa. And basically, really for, for companies that, that really looks like into um into getting into the, uh the African market. So talk to the, uh talk to the experts that, that, that are available either via LinkedIn or, or through, through World of Math. Um recently, I was taking part of a panel and I was seeing that the what is a very, very important is the networking. A networking inside of Africa because Africa is fifty-four countries. But um a networking in between the uh um, the uh, the continents. So it's me, Americas, Europe and, and the Africa continents.
And if I can add um to the discussion, I don't want to go over time or anything. Um as far as the educational level, we definitely want to um look at that closely. So as far as gaming specifically entering into the African continent market, um a lot of our education foundation level are, have not, a lot of areas have not been introduced to technology as of yet. Um there's still a lot of rural areas where there's not a lot of electricity um or weather, even a computer or access to the internet. So when these gaming companies or either tech giants are coming in, um when you want to influence the culture, there's the top layer and then there's the granular layer. When you want to build a culture around gaming, when you want to um create opportunities around gaming, you definitely want to look at the elementary level. You know, the junior high school level, the high school level and creating a culture that exists, whether it's creating a coding camp. Um and there's a lot of public school districts that can really demonstrate, um you know, as a pilot that you can be used. You know, whether you pick all fifty-four countries um throughout Africa or fifty-six, I don't know. Is it fifty-four, fifty-six? I'm sorry.
Of course. Um, uh can, can I chip in as well? Um what I do currently at SVNET is very much focusing on, on, on the education. And um what I, what I have uh uh noticed, what I have noticed is that the game, the game development company doesn't only need technical and design competency, but they also and mainly need um business um and, and need, and they need to be business savvy managers or executives. They need to know how to pitch their game. They need to know how to create a business plan. You know, but for them to really gain traction from the investor, outside investors um in the, to, outside investors that going to invest in, in their game uh and invest in their dream. So there is two types of, of educations that we have to look at. The education of uh the game skills, the game design skills, the game development skills. But there is the education of the business uh skills as well.
So I want to chime in on that before we move on to the next question is uh Johanna, you mentioned that creating an ecosystem that will allow this to pretty much come into fruition. And Denise talked about educating from, from the youth, from the children. So growing up, I did not know anything about game development until I went to college. So when I was nineteen years old. Do you think that showing off like a master class tailored toward children? The age, let's say, grades four to eight for arguments, say it's like ten to fourteen. Would that allow them to get more interested in it? Or would you approach it a different way? Because obviously a master class, so to say, is a lot of information to take in. But how would you deliver this to the children? Uh Denise first.
Um this model has been demonstrated throughout US, you know, school districts and, you know, I work in California, I mean, I live in California. So we do this all the time. So that model does exist in terms of how to engage kids in a strategic way. And fourth grade is the, you know, around the age where they go into a coding class um that you can sign your kids up for after school. Um and the pioneer would be the uh investment company that comes in. So you would be the pioneer. So Ubisoft or Unity, whichever pioneer wants to drop their pin down. Um and partner with the schools about creating small um coding camps. And you know, invest in that uh technology environment where give them electricity, give them wifi so that they can run and operate that class where there's three hours a day that they're getting um coding knowledge. Um I think it would be great just as a, as a starting point. And to Johanna's point, that you should also look at the professional level. So there's a lot of young adults that have ample time because we have a large population size there. So there's this middle age gap between like eighty and eighteen and forty, forty-five um who are sitting idle and not doing much. Um so in that arena would be to support them in their promoting their businesses and teaching them the skills, management skills, um which is what Johanna was speaking to. So don't ignore that population because um you know, they're vital, vital resources, available resources um for the creator and whoever's looking to expand.
So Johanna, to you now, before we move on to the next question, does this blueprint, will it work in Africa or does it work in Africa?
Um I, my first, my, my first, uh, my first response would have been uh, no. From, from a very young age, i- if we look at the current challenges, um there is, the first challenge is, is the mentality. Games is not something that a lot of parents would love their, their, their kids to do. Um so we need, the first challenge is we need to uh change that mentality. And I understand with the, um, the esports, uh the esports and the, the really the competition and um the, 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 the game, game as a profession is becoming very much um uh appreciated, but there is still a lot of work to be done. And if we have to go into um game for young, we need to go to private enterprise, to private associations that's going to come and do, and, and partner with um partner, as, either with the educational institution or either create their own association to, to get those um, those courses um available. So when I'm, and I'm talking about primary and, and high, high school. So with this, there is a, a lot of education to, to be done, a lot of awareness to be done uh about the, the possibility of working and being self-sufficient in the gaming industry. Now, in terms of um after post, post-secondary institution and young, 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 the young population, the, the awareness is already there because they, that esports is, is very um very popular in, in Africa. So the awareness is already there. Now, what I understand that Siddiq from, from Fasia is doing is really uh liaising, liaising um the, the esports, the fact that the, the consumption of the, the, the contact with the, with the professional side of the contact. So providing um training to become a professional either in the esports profession, either to become an esports professional, a game development professional or any type of professional in the, in the whole pipeline. Uh and now, uh the, the third point is um for, for establish, for establish a studio, it's already there. We, they, what, what they need from us is really investment. They need, they need from the Western, investment, education about uh anything that's going to, to, to bring the contact to a certain level that's going to be able to to, to, to be played everywhere without seeing any difference of quality.
Yeah, that is a very, very well-delivered message. I really, really appreciate that. And that makes a lot of sense. And I hope that people will be able to retain that and kind of use that as their experience and their blueprint for how we're going to build this whole thing up. And to finish things off, I want to ask one last question, everybody. Since we're a very international panel today, how can we work better together? I'll start with you, Leon.
Uh I thi- I think how to work better together, I think we have an industry, so the Western industry, we need to humble ourselves and start listening more. Um we cannot just expect, especially if our, if our goals are to become more diverse in the industry and work more together with uh, with non-Western companies, then we need to take that active approach. We need to go. We need to go look for them, listen to them and see what is necessary instead of imposing what we think is needed.
No, I agree with that completely. Joanna, you next.
Yes, what Leon said is we need to look at the business landscape of the companies in gaming, trying to run their business, um, constant with those gaming companies that have survived over the last six years on the African continent. And really try to understand how far they have come and how, and look at their business model in a, because we know today that is obviously not a game generating revenues that allow them to survive. However, we can, we can learn from them and, and understand what is really needed in, in order, in order to, to be applied and we can leap from into the future with the association and with, in order to have this blueprint from those companies that are already on the, on the, on the continent.
Um, to decomplexify all of that, um, and to demystify all of that, literally start West Africa, come to Nigeria, um, go to Ghana, um, you know, these coun- these countries are ready to go. You know, we need to stop talking about it and be more actionable. Um, plant seeds on the ground and put money behind it because you're not going to be able to move your agenda or any action without capital. So just get the capital there, send the wire, make the transfer, make the hire. Um, you know, we are long overdue for gaming culture in West Africa, all of Africa. But if you have to start somewhere, you know, definitely West Africa is the place to be. Um, and, you know, let's push this agenda forward. Um, Leon has, and Kirsten has done a great job in, you know, showcasing a lot of blacks, you know, stars in the gaming industry. So we exist, um, and Joanna, you know, she is, you know, a shining light at Unity. Um, and, uh, I'm happy to be on a panel with her today.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. And I guess, uh, for me, my closing thoughts on this is more so being able to network with each other. We all have the same goal, we all want to accomplish the same thing. And the education part is very important. So someone like me who did not know a lot about the African gaming culture until a few months ago, my mind was, was blown when we first had the conversation Denise and what you're telling us about what's happening in Nigeria and what's happening across the continent, I did not know it was already there. We just need to further expand our reach there. They help us out, we help them out. That networking, building that bridge is what's going to get us to really, really blow us out of the water. So I want to say thank you so much to everyone today on this panel for spending your time with us, giving us your thoughts. And I really appreciate this entire conversation. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. It was a pleasure to be here.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, everyone. Thank you so much. And stay tuned for the next panel because we have another one coming up. How to build bridges or not how to build bridges, how to break into the Western gaming industry. So if you're down for that.
Stay tuned.
Hello, uh, my name is Emmanuel Yao, Associate Director, Production Services at Ubisoft Singapore. It is an honor for me, uh, to be here, uh, to share with you how I get my job in the game industry. So, uh, I have been working for Ubisoft for the last fifteen years. And currently I'm in Ubisoft Singapore, running the production services. So, uh, the team is about fifty people and we are offering services, pipeline and processes to the production team. So the production team is a team that is really doing the game. And we, we need to make sure that, uh, they have some tool processes to improve their velocity. But at the same time, we need to be ready for the live. So live, I mean, when the game will be in the hand of the real player. So build also pipeline to make sure that we have all the processes ready for life. So, but before we go more in detail on what I'm doing currently, I think it will be important for me to share how I get there. Okay, so this is, uh, the, the title of this keynote, how did I get my job in the game industry? So, uh, I'm born in Ivory Coast, uh, in Cote d'Ivoire, West Africa. And, uh, after my primary and secondary, uh, school, I was lucky to get a scholarship from the government to go to university in France. So, uh, after some five years, I got my, uh, electrical engineer diploma. And I decided to have a specialization after this engineer diploma. So, uh, I register for a master in telecommunications and network at Institut National de Telecomunication in south of Paris. So, uh, after this one, I was able to have a job at Alcatel, you know, Alcatel Telecom. And, uh, mostly, uh, I was a software engineer working on monitoring of the, uh, ATM, the asynchronous transport modes, I mean, has a high-speed internet that this organization was building. So it is more, uh, software engineer, engineering, programming skill set and so on. So ling- the language was mostly C plus plus and so on. So, uh, when I finished, uh, my contract with Alcatel, I have also a request, uh, immigration to Canada, uh, where I was accepted because at this time, Canada was looking for high-skill professional to move to their country. So of course, as I told you, I got my scholarship from Ivory Coast. So before moving to Canada, I went back to Ivory Coast, Cote d'Ivoire, to talk to the authority and also to my family. And my family, they give me one advice, okay, you have this opportunity to go to learn. So we recommend you to go to Canada, have experience and maybe later you can come back to share your experience to young people and also inspire them. So I decided to move to Canada. And when I went to Canada, I joined a big telecommunications, uh, uh, business like, uh, Nortel Network, Harris Communication, and I was mostly building embedded software for real-time components. So the software was part of some, uh, it can be part of some ATM switch system, also some, uh, uh, micro antenna system that now people are using on the, on the mobile, mobile communication. But I don't know if you remember, in the two thousand, there is a big, big crash on the telecommunications business. So there is a lot of bankrupt and so on. And at the same time, Ubisoft was looking for, uh, professional who has some skill set on networking. But I can tell you, uh, I'm not a big gamer at this, at this time. I think if I recall correctly, I was just playing Pac-Man and Tetris. So I, uh, went to Ubisoft and, uh, I, I get the job, I got the position as a software developer at Ubisoft. So I integrating the team that we call at this time Technology Group. And this time I think Ubisoft, uh, mostly before was doing single-player game. And the Technology Group, our mandate is to develop multiplayer middleware that we can integrate into the game so that we can have all the online and multiplayer aspect, aspect of the game. So I joined this game, this, uh, this new group that created and I do remember, uh, the first day at Ubisoft. So when I came, uh, I was really welcomed by the team. And my boss told me, Emmanuel, welcome to the team, your desk is there, please sit down and play, play the game. So I was like, uh, yes, uh, sorry, I just, uh, here, I'm a software engineer and I'm here to, 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 to develop, uh, multiplayer game, I'm not here to play game. And, uh, I don't, I don't know how to play game, I don't like to play game, I'm here to develop software. So he said, no, 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 uh, your first day, you have to play game and so on. So for me, I thought that playing game is not part of the job. Play game is for people who don't know what to do, but in fact, this is right. You need to play the game to understand how the real player feel and you can come with what need to be fixed and so on. So, uh, it was really funny the first day at Ubisoft and I can tell you, uh, it was a really, really good experience. So I was part of the flying developer team. So I was a team lead of, of flying developer. And our mission is to take the online software that we are building and to go to integrate them in all Ubisoft games so that we can bring the multiplayer component and also the online part. So as a flying team, I can tell you, we flew a lot around the world because Ubisoft is everywhere. And I got this opportunity to go several times in China to support Ubisoft Shanghai on some of the game. And I do remember the first time that I took the flight and I reached Shanghai. So, uh, as I told you, my name is Emmanuel Yao. And, uh, there is this Chinese girl who came to welcome me at the airport and she has on some kind of card, my name Emmanuel Yao. And guess what? Because of my name, she was expecting to welcome a Chinese. And when she saw me, she said, uh, I think there is a mistake, uh, we are waiting for a Chinese guy. I said, sorry, it's me Emmanuel Yao and I'm here to help you to integrate our middleware inside your game so that you can have the multiplayer. So it was really funny. And, um, after several interaction, I came back to Montreal because I was at Ubisoft Montreal. And I told to my wife, I think we can, I would like us to go to China because there is an opportunity and also it will give us also a way to discover this agriculture, work with people and so on. So we decided to take our two girl and my wife and we moved to China. Uh, it was a really, really great experience working with this talented people at Ubisoft Shanghai. Uh, of course, uh, you have to learn Mandarin, so you are, you are, you have to speak Chinese also sometime. You don't have, but it is good for you to understand. And, um, during my work at Ubisoft Shanghai as lead network programmer, we did some, uh, collaboration also at this time with Ubisoft Singapore. And at the end of the collaboration, Ubisoft Singapore was doing the first free-to-play. And with my background of, uh, networking and online, they asked me to move to Ubisoft Singapore. And I took my wife and my girl and we moved to Singapore and now I'm here for the last ten years already. So, uh, when I reached Ubisoft Singapore, as you know, before I was more programming, but the first challenge that I get is I need to switch my career. My, uh, boss, uh, Luki, asked me to be, uh, the Technical Operation Manager. So it mean that, uh, when you have the game, you, you are responsible to take the game to put on the hand of player and work closely also with the development team to bring, to send them the feedback from the team. It was not easy, it was a challenge for me, but it was really fun because I took this challenge and I transform it as in, into an opportunity. So, uh, inside this organization, I have a lot of opportunity for me to navigate. I changed career several times. So after, uh, this Technical Operation Manager, I moved to Project Manager, working closely with the online team and multiplayer engineers. And at some time, I decided maybe it is time for me to learn how to do game. So I work closely with game designer and gameplay programmer as associate producer, building world and also, uh, working on the three C, the AI team and also, uh, the combat. Okay, and, uh, this one really gave me all the visibility on the flow process and the fro- the framework to, to build a grid, a grid game. And lastly, on the last two years, uh, there is this opportunity that came again where, uh, uh, my boss asked me, uh, if I'm willing to take over, uh, new challenges again, make sure that I can work closely with the team to bring some services to the production team and also be ready for live because with my past experience of live operation manager, I have also, uh, I know also how to run the live activities. So this is where, uh, now I'm the Associate Director of Production Services. So production services, I was telling you at the beginning, is really the glue between the production and the over entity and also with the player. So everything starts with the player. We want the player to be happy with our game and we want them to be engaged. So we need to listen to them and make sure that people are working on their need. So we, we are working with the frontline to bring this feedback to the production team. But at the same time, we are here to run a business, so we need to be profitable. So we have a close collaboration with the business operation to make sure that, for example, the monetization is working as expected and we can deploy all the, uh, features on the game when the game is live. Uh, in my team also, uh, I have the QA and the QA engineering. So quality, we need to make sure that the bill that we are bringing to the player respects the high quality. So the service is coming from my, uh, team because under my responsibility, I have also the QA and the QA engineering. So QA engineering, they are doing all, everything that is relating to the automatic testing and so on. We have over-interaction also with our QC, worldwide QC. So it is really a big spectrum of the, the game that we are, we are running. And the last, not the least, it is operation. The game need to be, uh, efficient and running on solid back, uh, backend. So this is where the operation team come to make sure that all the cloud system are working as expected and we can handle the number of player that we are expected. And, uh, this is really, uh, where, uh, we need to be ready for live and make sure that everything that we are doing is really backed up by data. So I have a close relationship with the, our data as a service team. And, uh, the director is also an African, Shedi, coming from Egypt. So just to let you know that this organization is open to everyone. So really, uh, I want to share with you this experience because I think that, um, as an African, I was able to succeed on this organization and everyone can succeed also. So first, you need to set a goal for you, okay? What really do you want? And you need to be good on what you are doing, okay? And after that, be open to try and to fail and to learn for your failure. So this is where it is good for you to take your challenges and transform your challenges into opportunities. Be open also to other people, to other ideas, uh, push a lot on the teamwork and make sure that you have a really good communication. And of course, because this, uh, organization, this, uh, framework or doing game is evolving every day, so keep yourself really, uh, up to date on the latest technology. So, uh, quickly, uh, this is what I want to share with you, just to share with you, uh, my journey inside, uh, the video game with Ubisoft. So thank you very much for this opportunity and I hope that, uh, uh, more people will be engaged and we will slowly push, uh, the game in Africa. Why? Because everyone know that Africa is the future. So please, let's be ready. And I'm really happy because when I was leaving to Canada, my parents told me, Africa is your continent, Cote d'Ivoire is your country. You will come back with what you learn so that people of your country will learn. And this is what I'm doing now, sharing my knowledge to my people and make sure that they can learn from my mistake and be good for the future. Thank you very much. Keep in touch.
Hi, everyone. I hope you're all doing well. Um, I'm Fatim, I am a media planner at Ubisoft Canada. First of all, thank you to the team for inviting me. It really is an honor to be part of such an event, so thanks a lot. And, uh, yeah, I'm here to talk to you about how I got my job in the industry. Um, first, a little backstory about me. I am Senegalese, I lived in, uh, Central African Republic in Bongo for about ten years before coming to Canada. Um, I came to Canada around two thousand and ten for my studies. And, um, I was a student at the business school in Montreal. But when I got my diploma after graduation, I just couldn't find a job in my field of experience. So, um, just so you know, I studied marketing and international first and I discovered that I loved advertising. I, I, I got a class that was revealing for me. But I couldn't even begin to imagine how hard it was to find a job in a country where you are a foreigner, you are trying to make it, but you do not have many contacts nor job experiences. Um, in Quebec, you can only work part-time when you are at school to respect, uh, the conditions of immigration. So I didn't have many options to get contacts in the marketing world. So I just went from short-term contracts to short-term contracts, I did, uh, call centers, uh, so many, so many things. And I managed, I still managed to get, uh, two unpaid internships that lasted a few months each, both at, um, small marketing agencies. But at the same time, I was still actively looking for a stable job. Uh, I often tell the story of when I had to clean my, clean up my email a few years back and I saw that I had sent hundreds of resumes and spontaneous applications in only a year and a half of active show. in only a year and a half of active search searching, just to finally get three interviews. That's the last, last one that led to my first full-time job actually at a digital advertising agency. I was so thankful because I was this close, but really this close to give up and change my plans. But, uh, just because, uh, first I wanted to continue my studies and I wanted to go back home. So that was a big accomplishment. So yeah, uh, at the agency, I managed to get a foot in the door of the entertainment industry. Just because one of our clients was a film studio. And I have to say that it was literally like a dream come true. I was, when I was young and was, I was watching TV. I imagined that at least one day of my life, I, I would have a job or an internship uh, in the marketing department of a large animation studio. I won't tell you which one. But it just seems like an inaccessible industry. Uh, I wasn't even thinking about the gaming industry, to be honest. It seemed even more out of reach. At the time, I was young, so, um, I thought that everything related to games were, was happening in Japan or China. And here I was in Central African Republic or in Senegal, thinking about that. It was just so far away. So, but yet, here I am, working for Ubisoft Canada, so. Anywho, at the, um, at the agency I was working for, the learning curve was really steep. And I, I was able to learn a lot. I was able to evolve and my colleagues and superior, superiors were really trusting me. But at some point, I found that tasks were repetitive. I wanted to try something different, to, to try some, to do something more and to be more challenged. So I started looking for something else while working, while still working at the agency. And at the, at that same time, Ubisoft Canada was looking for a social media ad specialist. So that was the opportunity. And the next colleague actually forwarded the offer to me and suggested that I apply just because, uh, the job looked perfect for me, if I may say. And I did, I applied. I went through all the process, all the, the many interviews. There were so many interviews that I really thought I wouldn't get in. And yet I got a call, I was offered a job, and here I am. So I, I, I think that I only realized it was true, it was real, when I sat at my assigned desk, uh, at Ubisoft Canada. And it just got me like, hey, I am advertising on social media uh, for some of the games that I am playing at home. That was, it felt good. That was a big accomplishment for my inner child. So yeah, and I managed to continue evolving professionally. I actually got a promotion this year, so I am now a media planner. And instead of working only on the social media strategy, I'm also handling the, the strategy for TV, for out of home, um, anything about digital media, so working with Google and stuff. So that's a big accomplishment. I feel, it feel, it feels good. And it's funny because when you think about the, the, the time when you, you were trying to look for a stable job and people were here telling you, hey, keep trying, you only need one yes. I personally found it ironic just because it's not just, it's not that easy to stay motivated and to not give up when you, when you hear, uh, sending out hundreds of applications. But in the end, that was true. They were right. And I guess that, that what I learned during this journey is persistence. Just to never give up, stay focused on my objectives, stay focused on my dream, listen to my intuition. And just to try to get through any, any door available. And just because once I got in, it was only the beginning. My journey was just starting. So yeah, that's, uh, that's my story. Uh, I hope you liked it. It was an honor for me to share it with you today. Um, thanks a lot for listening to me. Do not hesitate to reach out to me on LinkedIn. It will be a pleasure for me. Just, I, I will try to keep you motivated and to help you persevere. So thanks again for your time and attention. And thanks again for, for the, the team for including me. It was really appreciated.
Good day, everyone, and welcome back to the Black Game Pro Mixer Fajah Edition. So right now, we're gonna be hopping into the third panel. I would like to introduce you to our panelists, starting with Fatim Diop, Jean-Philippe Deho and Emmanuel Yao. How are we doing today?
Yeah, doing great. Hello, everyone.
Alright, so it's gonna be a really interesting panel because right now we're gonna be talking about breaking into the Western gaming industry. So as of right now, personally, I did not know how big the African market was in gaming. So let's ask a couple of questions here. Fatim, we'll start with you. Is this even possible?
Of course, yes, uh, cause we're still here. But, um, I just want to say that it's, it's not, I can't say that it's not difficult. It just take a, a good combination of hard work, like anything. And it also takes chance, just because you have to get the opportunity and you have to seize it. But it also, it also takes a good understanding that working in games, even in the Western industry, is not only about being in technology or being a developer. You can get in so many different fields like music, marketing, finance, legal. So I, I, I really believe that anything is possible in this world, yeah.
Definitely believe that as well because, um, like, like, we've talked about before in the previous mixes is that there's so many different job opportunities within the industry. People just always assume that I have to be a programmer, I have to be an engineer. But getting into graphic design, 3D art, stuff like that, even legal as well, it's wide open. Speaking about legal, what are your thoughts on this, JP?
Yeah, it's true. It's very true. Uh, I mean, I've been, I'm working in the legal, um, department of Ubisoft for the last five years and I've actually transitioned my job from a legal counsel, um, position to our legal innovation manager position, which is more about, you know, communication, um, automation, um, legal tech, legal design. So actually, you know, my message is, yes, it's possible and, and you have to also be able to, you know, kind of switch jobs as well, you know, and be flexible in terms of what you want to do. So I think, I think, yeah, there's, there's a lot of opportunities, especially in gaming and tech because the, the field is so wide open because we're trying to be faster and we're trying to be in the future as well. So, you know, if you're a law student, for example, today, you need to be able to also think, hey, what is, what's gonna be the legal job of the next, you know, 30 years? And at that point, I think, uh, at Ubisoft, we've been at the forefront of that. And, uh, yeah, I'm really glad to, to be in a video game. A lot of people look at us and say, hey, you guys are really ahead. Um, so yeah, there's a lot of opportunities and, uh, and yeah, and innovation as well. So yeah, definitely, uh, people should look at so, like, other opportunities and not just, uh, developer. Even though that's a great, that's a cool job as well.
Yeah, the we developers are cool as hell. So one thing you touched on is really interesting is that, uh, the flexibility because I've known a lot of people in my short time in the industry that has started as one role and flipped to something else due to new interests or new skill sets that were required. So having that flexibility is really clutch. So Emmanuel, we're asking the same question. What are your thoughts on this?
I think I'm aligned with what JP and Fatim just shared. Uh, there is a lot of opportunity in video games. I think that for me, I switched my job for the, I think, five or seven times already. I start initially as a software developer. And after I, I moved to lead network programmer. Uh, the third job was for me, a new thing that I never did before. It was a technical operation manager. So dealing with real players between developer who don't give me what need player, need, what player need to do. So you need to take the challenges and changes as opportunity, as Fatim just shared. And slowly, by interacting with people, you have more experience. You can become more like a project manager, after associate producer, and finally associate director. So it's like, uh, four, cha, four different kind of job, five, five different, sorry, five different type of job. And, uh, and I'm still hungry to learn more stuff because I know that there is more opportunity coming and so on. So, uh, don't be afraid to take a challenge, but be open to fail and learn from your failure so that you can succeed later.
And that's a really great point, like, um, having that hunger to learn more is very, very addictive because for myself, um, I'm a development tester right now at Ubisoft Toronto. And I've dabbled in 3D art, I've dabbled in VFX. And I'm not trying to be a jack of all trades, but getting the ability to learn more is really great. And I think you mentioned about failing is really important because you can't succeed unless you failed. And through your failure, you learn how to succeed. That's really important to kind of embrace on your journey to whatever career you get into. Now, speaking about careers, Emmanuel, I'll go back to you. How to be, how can you be successful in your career in video games?
So I think, uh, Fatim just shared, first, there is opportunity, okay? When you have an opportunity, you need to seize this opportunity. As a beginning can be a challenge, okay? Because it's a new position that maybe you are, you have to deal with. You don't have maybe the background, you don't know how to do. But first, be your app, be open to learn from other. This is a way for me to slowly navigate. You learn because there are some people who know how to do this kind of stuff already. So you learn from them and slowly you become better and better, okay? So, uh, of course, when you go in games, in anywhere, you have one target. You, you know some, you, you know how to do something and you need to be at the best of this position. Because you need to be on the top of your job expertise. And slowly, you have to bring your soft skill, see what other people are doing. More communication, more teamwork and so on. And slowly, I think, opportunity will come. And by using your soft skill, for me, when I, when I hire people, first what I look at, I look at the soft skill. Because I know that the hard skill, you can learn from school and you will become better. But how do you interact with people? And this is something that I think that I, I have it on my side. Uh, is this something that you don't learn in school? But because maybe I travel a lot, I left Africa, I moved to France after I was in Canada. I spent some time in China and now I'm in Singapore. So I think I get this opportunity to be flexible, to learn from people. And this is a key for the success on my side. But anyway, you need to be good on what you know and slowly be open to learn from others also. So I think this is the two recipe that I have. Be good on what you know to, what, what, what you, what you are doing and be open to learn from other.
And those soft skills are really important too because you want to have that proper attitude to be like, well, I don't know what this is, but I'm willing to give everything to learn about it. And I want to be ready to take on any opportunity that comes my way. So that's really a good way of putting it. Uh, JP, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I really agree with, with Emmanuel saying. This is, this is key to me to do this, this, uh, this intervention because I, you know, my parents are from Ivory Coast. Uh, they came to the, the French in the eighties. I grew up in France. I, I went to Ivory Coast a lot. Um, you know, lived in France, went to the US. Now I'm, I'm living, you know, kind of living between Paris and Berlin. This flexibility, this open mindset is key to, you know, being able to work with German people, French people, US people, Chinese people. You know, you need to let, that's key to your job because your mindset is always being like, how can I interact with this person? How can I work with that person? And I think this is, you know, one of the, the, the features that, you know, a lot of people coming from Africa have and should keep. So my first, my first, you know, advice is be yourself, which is someone that's open-minded and someone's gonna do everything to succeed. And, uh, and, and second of all, just, just, you know, culture that, that difference that you have. Uh, you know, I've been fortunate to be in this company for the, you know, for five years. And, you know, I've, you know, had some challenges, but also had opportunities to grow within, within my role. And I always took those opportunities and I think, you know, like I, I said, you know, like Emmanuel said, I really worked hard on my soft skills, on my difference, and also worked hard on my job. So, you know, yeah, it's be yourself and work hard. Those are the, the, the two things, uh, that I, and keep the smile, uh, 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 as well. You know, it's like, you know, job is important, but, you know, sometimes you get, you get too much into it. And I always like to, especially in those times, I always like to tell my colleagues, hey, can we talk about movies? Can we talk about books? Can we, can we just not always talk about work? And they, they appreciate that, you know?
Even too, like, I will bring that back to this incredible year of 2020 that we're having. And for some people, some people who are working from home, not being able to do everything else, you're gonna want to talk about something that you've watched, movies that you're listening to, to get that break. So I think that's really, 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 really important, especially this year. So finishing off with you Fatim, what are your thoughts on this?
I couldn't have said it better than Emmanuel and Jean-Philippe. I mean, it's, it really is the soft, the soft skill, the, 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 the open mindness and... I, I can't say that, I'm, I can't say that I'm successful yet, so I, I'll let you know if, uh, this recipe works. But, uh, I really believe that in order, in order to feel successful in, in, uh, this industry, you must keep learning. It's, it's a fast-paced world just because you are working in, in innovation. And you, you need to stay ahead of the game. So either in your job, in your job skills, or, um, just with your soft skills, like Emmanuel said. So yeah, I really believe in that and I, I'll tell you in a few years when I, I feel really successful, if that works.
One cool thing is to like, uh, when, when we talk about success, success means something different to every single person, right? So growing up, I knew that I wanted to be game developer my entire life. I worked a lot of retail, a lot of odd jobs. So for me, becoming successful at video games was getting into video games. Now from here, it's what can I do to better myself at that, right? So speaking of what we do every day and how to become successful in our career, what are some things we should say what not to do? So I'll continue with you Fatim.
The, okay, so the two, the two things I learned so far is that, um, I mean, the working, uh, anywhere, at, anywhere at all, um, it's not, it's really, it really is different from what you were doing previously. If you were at school, um, what you learn in school cannot be entirely applied to what you're doing right now. So, hmm, what you shouldn't, um, miss is that you, you shouldn't hesitate to, to talk to people that are working in the fields that you want to work in, in the pos, or in the positions that you want to work in. Just because you have, you need to have the idea of that day-to-day job of the, the, the soft skills that will help you best to, 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 um, to, to adapt to this, uh, to this job. And I think that the second thing would be, you shouldn't think that you are not enough. Cause sometimes we tend, we tend to downplay, um, what we are doing. And we're, we're always doing better than we think, I, I think. So yeah, I think that's really, you shouldn't hesitate to contact people in the position you, you want to discuss. And you shouldn't try to downplay your accomplishment.
Yeah, I agree with that. And to kind of expand on that a little bit more too, um, one thing I will say like what not to do is, um, don't like harass people in that position. Cause a lot of people get to like, oh, like I'm, I found this person on LinkedIn. Let me go bombard them with a bunch of questions. PS, you have no idea who I am. Let's not do that. All right, JP, what are your, your thoughts on this? What do you think people should not be doing?
Yeah, first of all, coming back to what you said about success, that I thought, I thought that was really important, what you said about the differences of different, you know, everyone has their opinion on what's success. And you shouldn't really focus on other people's, you know, definition because then you get trapped into, oh, I should be this, I should be that. Whereas when you focus on what makes me happy, when, you know, sometimes you really feel that comfort zone and you really feel like, hey, I'm, I'm, I'm actually doing well right now. Um, and, and about what not to do, I think that's, that's one of the things is like, don't compare, don't, don't compare yourself to other people. Uh, that's really important because, you know, you got different backgrounds, you have different stories, you have different, you know, mindset. And, and usually sometimes if you try to compare yourself to other people, then you get trapped into this, this thing. Um, for me, it has been a lot of, um, don't, don't think too fast, don't think about too ahead, you know, don't go too fast. You know, life takes time, you know, I, I started at Ubisoft as 26. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm 30 now. I feel like, you know, I've been, I've been going at it for 10 years, but in fact, it's been five. So, you know, it's like time, you know, time is of the essence and you should always enjoy, you know, the process. And I know it's easy to say, but like, you know, actually I've had this, this conversation with my mentors. He's like, you know, enjoy the process, enjoy what you live in right now. And, and when you do that, sometimes you, you'd be surprised of how you feel that joy of like, hey, you know, this time that has passed, uh, even though I feel like it's been 10 years, it's been just five and I've been having a great time. So yeah, don't rush to anything. And yes, I think I've, I've talked about this before, but the, 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 the thing about networking for me is about, um, you know, generally networking, which is, you know, talking to someone. which is, you know, talking to someone out of nowhere and just getting that connection and then say, hey, you know, let's stay in contact, let's stay in touch and really stay in trust. So I think I said that before, but I'm saying it now because my story has been about, you know, meeting people and then say, hey, we should work together and then really stick to it. But then when I look at it a year later, this relationship has grown into a partnership between me, for example, Ubisoft and Taylor Westing, a big law firm. I just met two lawyers at a conference in Berlin and I said, hey, we should stay in contact. And now we've been going on our third projects together and the relationship now has grown. And it was just a, you know, just a general conversation about, hey, you guys are working on legal design, hey, we should stay in touch. And I think those really work. So not, don't rush too much, don't push too hard, just take your time and, you know, grow in your life, in your business, in your career, and things will fall apart, I promise you that.
Yeah, I really like what you said about, I'm just kind of taking your time and all that, because a lot of people need to realize that you can't always think about the future so far. You need to respect where you're at right now so you can appreciate the future you're gonna get. Because if you don't really live in the now, you're gonna let everything pass by and you're gonna miss opportunities. Because this happened, it's happened to me a bunch of times. So living in the now and really respecting that is very, very, very pivotal to what your career may look like. So finish off with you Emmanuel, what are your thoughts on this?
So for me, I think first, don't give up. You have a dream, push your dream forward. It will not be easy. Now fifteen years at Ubisoft, I'm laughing, I'm smiling, but there is a lot of issue that I learned from and to be more like who I am now. And now I think that, so don't give up and please listen to others and respect other people's ideas. So because you will learn a lot from them and so on. So initially, when I got this question, I was like, okay, maybe what I know, let me share what you have to do to be successful. And after you put don't in front of. So when, be sure that you have a goal and you want to achieve more than what you plan in general, okay? So try to achieve consistently on everything that you are doing. Because when you go to this game industry, it's because you have a skill set that makes a difference compared to other people. So try to be the best at this one. The second, the collaboration is really important. You need to work, you cannot stay on your side and do the game yourself. You need to collaborate with other people around you. This is why it's very important to respect people's ideas. Don't say no to them, listen to them, come back later with maybe, oh, there is another way to do stuff and so on. So the collaboration is very important. And don't sit on what you have, because things are changing around yourself, you need to learn a lot. And you need to be up to date on what is coming. Currently, people are talking about blockchain, AI. How can we use this kind of new technology inside the game and be in the top and so on? So I think this three things, try to achieve consistently, be really open and collaborate with people, listen to people, respect their idea also. And after that, make sure that you are challenging yourself, you are learning and so on, because this industry is so wide. Maybe my next move will be maybe to go in marketing, to learn how people sell game and so on, this kind of stuff. So we are very lucky to be on this industry. When I was young, I said that I want to be a pilot. But now when I look at the COVID situation, I think I'm in the right industry now. So, yeah.
No, that's a very, very solid point. And when you talk about being open, I think is something that's really underrated in the gaming industry, because every project you work on is gonna be different. So I've been working at Ubisoft for three and a half years now. I just recently shipped Watch Dogs Legion and I'm currently working on Far Cry Six. And the processes from one game to the other are a bit different, even though we're in the same company. And let's say, working on the Object Bank Pipeline and Watch Dogs is far different from what I'm doing on Far Cry. But being open about, all right, this is what this process is, here's how we can innovate it, here's what worked here, here's what doesn't work over here, how can we meet in the middle? I think it's very important to your growth as, for me particularly, an artist and just as a developer in general. So I'll ask you guys one last question, which I think is gonna be very interesting and I'm really intrigued to hear what this is gonna be. So how did your African heritage contribute to where you are right now in your career? So Emmanuel, I'll go with you first.
So I think African heritage, you know, African people, we are really positive in general, okay? And the day-to-day work sometimes is so, it can be very painful and so on. But you keep this hope that at the end of the day, good thing will come at the end. So this is where most of the time, when some situations are really catastrophic, you don't know what to do. And people come to me, Emmanuel, what happened? You are still smiling every day. Because I know that at the end, we will find the solution. So positivity and so on is really important. And now I'm running a team of fifty people. I think I don't have the right to be down, I need to lift the people up. And I'm using my African background to help me on this one.
And that right there kind of shows off like how great your leadership skills is. So your heritage contributes to who you are as a person and your ability to lift up your team, especially in times like this, like really speaks volumes about who you are as a person and what your heritage really means to you. So Fatim, ask the same question.
Well, I think for me, it really is about adaptation. Just because I grew up, I was born in Senegal. And ten years later, I had to move to Central African Republic. It was a different kind of country, it was, there was less people, it was a new language too. And I think that I really learned about adaptation, like knowing how to adapt in a new country, in a new situation, in a new job. I went from call centers to Ubisoft Media Planner, to social media advertising and stuff. So I really, this heritage really comes with adaptation, yeah.
Yeah, being able to adapt, I think, works in any particular field, but especially with your story kind of moving from one place to another, learning a new language, that's not easy at all. So I really appreciate that, thank you. So JP, I'll be finishing with you.
Yes, I mean, what you said about the heritage, that's really important. I think, you know, when I was growing up, my mom used to say, I would say it in French, she was saying, savais les, c'est du kef, it means, it's gonna be okay, it's good. And, you know, growing up, I was always, you know, having that phrase in my head. And what Emmanuel said about, you know, like when you're having a down day, you know, I always, I always used to be the guy like, why are you still smiling? You know, and I kept that. And also the heritage of like feeling that what your parents went through, in my situation of moving from Africa to come to France, to have the family and have, you know, kids and have, give them an education is also something that I look up to in terms of, you know, working hard and making them proud of. Of course, they are proud, but I usually keep that in mind because, you know, it's a journey that they took for me to be in this position. So and I keep that in my work. So yeah, usually when people are kind of down and kind of like feeling life is tough and I say, hey, guys, like, you know, win this position, we should really push forward and keep that smile. So I think it's really important. Talking with Emmanuel, talking with Fatim, today I felt like, okay, this is, those are the things that we have and we should really keep them and then look forward to the next challenges. And keep, you know, keeping that phrase that my mom used to tell me, because I, you know, I keep it every day, you know?
And I can relate to that too a little bit, because my parents immigrated to Canada from Trinidad. And the whole like, we gotta get out of the situation we're in right now to make sure that you guys have a good future. And really, really drilling in that this opportunity is now yours, keep positive and do whatever you want to do. Don't let anything kind of like put you into a corner. So I really, really relate to that, thank you very much JP. And that will actually end this panel, so I'd like to thank you all very much for your time, I really do appreciate it.
Thanks a lot for inviting us.
Thank you, merci beaucoup, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And we're back, Kirsten.
Hello, sir.
Isn't it always cool to see these conversations and hear these interesting insights? For me, that is one of the reasons why I'm so happy to be involved with the Black Game Throw Mixer. It's just listening to all these stories and seeing how linked somehow they all are, what do you think?
It's always like, for me, the only word I could use is magical, because everyone has their own unique story and they are so vastly different from each other. And particularly with this mixer, because like I mentioned during earlier panel, I did not know the background of how diverse gaming is in Africa, the diaspora and what that looks like. So being educated about that today was really inspiring and really thoughtful. And be like, all right, well, this is happening in Africa, like what's happening in like the smaller cities and the smaller countries and what does that look like? And how can we really expand this? And who could I talk to to learn more or where could I go to learn more? And it's been really, really, again, the stop provoking very magical today.
Yeah, but I mean, but that indeed is the right word. And the interesting thing that you're saying indeed is by, one of the cool things that I have experienced while working for Ubisoft for as long as I have fourteen plus years is being able to travel. Being able to travel and see gaming communities all over the world interact with each other during these events that we do. And the interesting thing is, it's something that I also, once again, was confirmed for me today and during the sessions that we had prior to, well, today, is that while indeed cultures might differ and any backgrounds might differ and territories and all that kind of stuff might differ, there is this unifying thing. And in the end, and that's the cool thing, and that's one of the reasons why I love the gaming industry, because in the end, we're all gamers and we're all here to...
Yeah, man.
I don't know, man, it's indeed, and magic is the right word to use for that, because it further confirms a feeling that I already had.
Yeah, and I'll touch on that again, because when I first got into the industry, I will never forget my first ever E3 meeting devs from across the world. It's like, hey, you do things that are dope, no, 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 you do things that are dope. I'm from Canada, oh, I'm from America, I'm from Europe. It's like, oh, like we're all doing dope things across the world. How do we come together to really bring it home and create these amazing products? So having this mixer, particularly today, was just like really expanding that now. Because again, for me, like I mentioned just now, learning about the African diaspora and what gaming looks like in the continent has been really eye-opening for me and I want to continue to learn that in different parts of the world.
No, I totally agree. And I think that one of the, that's the thing, it's like, I also learned so much. It's been an interesting, interesting journey, because before we started planning the African mixer, the collaboration with Fegy, is that honestly, we didn't really know that much. We didn't know what was going on in your country or in your continent. And once again, seeing all these similarities, but also hearing from you all that we as an industry, we as a Western industry, we need to do more, we need to really keep this dialogue going with all of you. Which is a good segue to how to stay in touch with us, because for us, honestly, this mixer is just a start. I think I said it in the beginning as well, for us, this is just a stepping stone, the starting point of a dialogue that we hope to have with all of you, because we're all in this together, we are all gamers. And on top of that, we're all black folks trying to make it in the industry in this case. And that's also to bring it back to what you earlier said, Kirsten, is like, when you just started working for Ubisoft, I remember when I met you at E3 and being like, oh shit, and the other fellow brother working at Ubisoft and working from the Toronto studio and doing cool stuff. And it's cool that through this mixer, these kind of networks get created. It's like people that work in the same industry but might not know each other yet, but have this kind of similar background or these similar kind of culture or similar skin tone. That indeed is the magical thing, I'm rambling.
Yeah, I'll really like, I'll kind of like riff off that as well, because when you look at the people that we've got to meet this year alone with the mixer that we did in July and the mixer today, there are a lot of us. And growing up for me, watching Gamescom and E3, I always want to see someone who looks like me presenting a game, talking about a game. And now that I know that there are a lot of people that look like us that do these things, how do I connect with them? How do I meet them? How do we continue this conversation? How do we collaborate to build our network of like black gaming professionals across the world internationally? Because it's not just Canada, it's not just the US, it's not just Europe, it's literally everywhere in the world.
I mean, I think all we can do is keep on doing what we know, but it also, I mean, we need all of you, all of you watching. We are aware that this is a, not a, probably a short-term kind of thing, it's something that we will need to, it will take time. But our goal is there and indeed, like Kirsten said, we want to see more of us in the industry. It is indeed the feeling and that's something that hopefully with this mixer and this initiative that we have, that we're trying to create indeed, the sense that, hey, you're not alone. Either if you're already in the industry and you're making your career, like some of the speakers that we had today, or if you're an aspiring video game artist or marketer or whatever, it's like, you're not alone. There are people out there in the industry that look like you, that know your struggles and that are here to help. And that's also one of the key takeaways that I hope that you all have from this mixer is that we're here, feel free to reach out to us, we're on LinkedIn, we're on Twitter, we're on Instagram or wherever we are, feel free to reach out to us. And that's also, the cool thing is that, once we started doing these mixers, started reaching out to our peers in the industry, it's so heartwarming to see how people embrace this and are like, yes, this is super cool, this is something I want to be affiliated with.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah.
Even with that, it's all good, it's all good. Like again, like we started this last July, oh, last June, sorry, at E3. And it was about like, let's say sixty, fifty people in that room, to the mixer that we did in my studio in Toronto in February, which is about a little bit over a hundred, to the mixer we did online, that was about four hundred, five hundred people. And now we are now embracing the African continent, so who knows how many people we're gonna have when it's all said and done. But I say all that to say this, is that we are all in this together and we need to find ways to help out each other, reach out to each other so that we could be successful in our own fields, so we could navigate how to get into the industry, whether it's figuring out what my skill set is, how could I use transferable skills from my last job to get into a career in the industry and what that looks like. So like Leon said, we're on LinkedIn, we're on Twitter, we're on Instagram. Find us, have the conversation. I am more than willing to have this conversation with all of you guys, because at the end of the day, I want to use this platform to help out as many people as I can. And doing interactions like this is the best way to do it. I am very genuine about this, I truly want to help as many people as I can, just, me up.
Yeah, and to riff on what you just said earlier, is that for me, it is not per se, yes, there is a huge potential for reaching even more people than we did in the previous ones, but even if there's one person watching out there, that now is like, oh wow, I want to join the industry, I can see myself do this now. For me, that's already a win, because it starts with one person. It's like, for example, the story that Fatim told, how she got in the industry. It's like, it's that kind of stuff. And so once again, if you're watching, reach out to us, that's what we're here for. Now, to kind of like transition, because like we said, the Black Game Pro's mixer is not over, we're just getting started. And with that in mind, we want to, we kind of already announced it yesterday, but for those who missed that, next week, Friday, the eleventh of December, we will be back with another Black Game Pro's mixer. And this time, we will focus on the UK market, so the United Kingdom market, to see what's going on there. We'll be talking to some of the movers and shakers who have been active there, who've been making a name for themselves. People like, for example, Mr Midas. We have, we have our very own Chella Ramanan, who works for Ubisoft Massive as a narrative designer and is co-founder of POC and Play. We have Sean Selena Grant from New Zoo, talking about, sharing some data about diversity and inclusion on the UK market. So all super cool, I mean, I hope you'll like it, super cool topics that I hope you will either get motivated by or, I mean, inspired or at least, I don't know, I mean, entertained, at least, I hope.
I mean, I think it would be all the above, and the fact that we're touching the UK market for the first time, this is going to be our fifth mixer now in the last year. I think it's like opening up people to what the gaming industry looks like internationally is really gonna spark the imagination of, oh, maybe I could do this anywhere in the world. Maybe I don't need to work in my hometown, maybe I can work somewhere across the world. And the possibility of that is very possible.
Exactly. So just to go a little bit deeper on what you can expect when you tune in next week, because I kind of teased it, but I didn't have to file in front of you, which I do have. Um, because I kind of like teased it, but I mean, I didn't have to file in front of you, which I do have right now. So we have three, three, three different panels. First panel, um, by the way, the, like I said, Friday, December eleventh, it will start at three PM GMT. Um, first panel that we have will be about breaking into the UK gaming industry, where we have Rosemary Boyan from Xbox. We have Lauren Dillon from Premier PR and we have Adam Campbell from Azumi and also co-founder in POC in Play. Uh, after that, we have another panel and in between we have some keynotes and interviews, but after that, we have another panel, being and staying successful in the UK gaming industry. Featuring Stephanie Ijoma, who is the founder of NME Saga. We have Marcus Bronzey, famous TV, uh, and online presenter. And we have, uh, Timmy Ofran, who is the, uh, the founder, uh, or co-founder of the Nerd Council. Uh, third panel that we have is making the industry truly diverse, a topic that's for, that for us is once again, that's one of the reasons why we're doing this mixers. How do we make this industry truly diverse and representative? So for that panel, we have, uh, we have Nigel, uh, from Maya Mara. Uh, which is a manga company, uh, we have Mr. Midas, the presenter, and we have another mystery guest which hasn't been announced yet. Uh, but more on that later. So Kirsten, what are you most looking forward to from this panel or from the mixer? What do you, what is, what is your goals? What do you want to achieve for this?
I mean, for me, my goals is really education because, um, it's funny enough, so growing up, I've been a huge fan of just like. UK culture from like the music to the TV and working on Watch Dogs Legion as my first ship title. I've learned a lot about London as a whole, but getting into the industry side of things, I want to learn like what does esports look like out there? What does game dev look like out there? What does marketing look like out there? So from our very, very. Eclectic mix of speakers we have next week, I want to know from their perspective, because then they have home court, they're talking about this from home. Like what that looks like, what that feels like. So getting that conversation going is what I'm really looking forward to.
Yep, and indeed, and for people that didn't know, Kirsten worked on Watch Dogs Legion.
Yes, sir.
How was that? I mean, that, that's the cool, that's the thing, it's like, I've been working for Ubisoft for so long, I, I, I've never worked on actually producing a game. This dude Kirsten over here, he actually did it and worked on one of the biggest games of, of the year. So. Unprepared, I know, but I'm asking you about it. What was it like?
Yeah, so like, it was wild. So, um, I'll just tell a quick background of me and Watch Dogs. So. Playing games growing up, like I was all in to Watch Dogs one, like I had the app, I pre-ordered the legend, like the flash edition of it, the game like Aiden Scarf and all that. And then, um, played it, it was alright, played Watch Dogs two thoroughly enjoyed it. Um, I played, I think, like two years after the fact. So then when I got hired at Ubisoft in twenty seventeen. I had like my, uh, my ramping on meeting, oh, like welcome to Ubisoft, this is what we do. By the way, you're working on Watch Dogs three, I'm like, pardon? Okay, so let's do it, I guess. So fast forward to, um, last year when we released, uh, the world premiere trailer. At E3, that was one of the most exhilarating experiences of my life because. A, my dream was to always go to E3 when I was a kid and B, I always had aspirations of being able to present a game at E3. And the fact that not only did I get to go to E3 for the second time last year, uh, I was able to be in the room when they announced Watch Dogs three. And being in there and listening and seeing people lose their entire shit was something I will never, ever, ever forget. And on.
So sorry, sorry, how, how did that feel? I mean, if you can explain that feeling.
Honestly, like, not because of December, but it felt like Christmas, like. It was exciting, it was just like being with my colleagues and my friends and like I also had people who were like, uh, in the media and whatnot. Um, that I reached out to afterwards. It's just like, it was really like, I've never experienced anything like it. Um, I'm looking forward to doing it again when, uh, Far Cry Six comes out. But, um, all in all, it was just like, it was a very, very humbling and great experience. Because when you work on a game, you're not seeing it from the outside, you're seeing like what issues are wrong with it, how to fix this, how to do that. Um, you're not really seeing the final product a lot. So that E3 was the first time I saw that trailer. We had like a little preview, I think, with the week before, but I ended up missing it because of like working on the game. So seeing that trailer live for the first time, like, damn. I did this? I was a part of this? That's wild. So now it was again, just simply amazing.
So then when you started playing the game and finished the game and watched the credits.
Okay, so I'll do you one better. So when, uh, so as you can see right here. I got my collection edition of Watch Dogs Legion, which is really dope, also have our Legends League hat on there, so shout out to Legends League. We got this big box of the collection edition, we got some other like swag in it and then when I actually got to hold the game in my hand. It was very emotional because I completed, I guess, a bucket list thing, I, I was a part of creating a game. And I had never done that before, not to say that I thought this was impossible, but it took me a long time to really soak in the, dude. You did the thing and you did the thing damn well. So I teared up about it, I got like really, really emotional about it, but it was like a very heartwarming experience and then. Playing the game, seeing my name in the credit, I'm like, damn, I'm physically in this game, like my name is in this game. People know that I was a part of this game. Was a very, again, very humbling experience and. I'm looking forward to working on many other games at Ubisoft, getting many other credits in Ubisoft and, like, I love everything about it. Like, I'm just like smiling ear to ear because it's just like, it's, it's amazing, it's, it's really amazing and I hope that other people will be able to experience this because it's. It's a very unique experience because it's like winning a contest is one thing, winning a championship is one thing, but then working hard. With your friends and colleagues to develop something from a concept to a full ass game is unlike anything else. I guess the only other thing that'd be similar to this would be movie and film production, TV production and all that, but like. This was very unique and I really, really enjoyed it and I want to kind of chase that high of completing games and like. Getting these products out to people. So again, like when Far Cry Six comes out, it'll be the same ordeal where, you know what, like I worked in this game, I worked my damn hardest on this game. I cannot wait for people to play this.
Yeah, man. Yeah, man. See, and then that's people wanted a reason why also we're doing this. We want to have more of these stories. And these stories can be your stories if you want. And I think on that note, what do you think, Kirsten? Should we sign off? Thank you, thank you by the way for, thank you by the way for sharing that, much appreciated.
No worries at all, it's, it's my honor and my pleasure to share this experience with people because I want people to know that it's possible. Again, like a quick, quick sidebar before we go off, like people who think they can't do it or they can't go to school because of like financial needs or whatever. I am a college dropout. I did not do college well, due to like someone's circumstances and all that, but like. I figured it out. So once you have the passion and you have the mindset of like, hey, I can do this, you will be able to do this. And on that note.
That note indeed. Everybody, thank you so much for watching, it means a lot. Um. Fedja, thanks so much for having us. Paradise Game, thanks so much for having us. CD, you the man. Uh, the Black Game Pros Mixer will be back next Friday, December eleventh, starting three PM GMT. Be there or be square.
Yes, sir. Thank you all very much. Have a good day.